Good evening, everybody, councilors. I'd like to welcome everybody to our June 28, 2022 City Council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council in according to open meeting law. Since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or press request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. I'd like to announce the names of the councilors that are here tonight. And we'll do a roll call on this. So would you just say, President, Councilor Jeff Worthley?
Present.
Councilwoman, present. Council Gross.
Present.
Council Grow.
Here.
Council Majota.
Present.
Council Memmar.
Present.
Council Nolan.
Present.
Council O'Hara.
Present.
Welcome, Jamie, and Councilor O'Neil.
Present.
All nine councilors are here, and I'd also like to mention a couple of members of city staff. We have Kenny Costa, our auditor. We have Peter Semenara, who is our shellfish warden. We have Joanne Sinos, who is our city clerk. And... I think that is all I see, councilors. Before we do our first order of business, which will be a flag salute, I'd like to do a moment of silence. So, councilors, would you join me in bowing your head? And this moment of silence for tonight's meeting is to remember Fabari Ferber, who drowned last night in one of our lanes, last week, in one of our lanes, Gloucester. He was an 18-year-old graduate of Everett High School. He was a member of the football team and actively involved in the church group. He was planning on attending Merriman College in the fall. And our heart goes out to his family and friends during this very difficult time. And I'd also like to remember and thank our first responders for their valiant efforts. Police officers Aboli at Palazola and firefighters EMT Thibodeau, firefighter paramedics Sanger and Aldridge for doing everything they could to find him. So let's take a moment to just remember him, the parents, many of us, we're strong family, and we're thinking of him and his family right now. Thank you, councilors. So I'd like to begin our meeting by saluting to the flag. If we could stand, and Council Worthley, you are up because you've pressed on roll call tonight. So if you would lead us in the salute, it'd be great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, Councilor. First, oh, and also I need to recognize Ryan, who is here from IT, Ryan Knowles. Thank you once again for being here to help us with the beginning of our meeting. Very much appreciated. You worked pretty pretty hard. And I also congratulate Pam Toby, who's not here tonight, but she just had a baby boy yesterday, and his name is Charles Bruce. So congratulations, Pam and family. First order of business, Madam Clerk. The first order of business is oral communication. The public shall have the opportunity of every regular, regularly scheduled meeting to be heard on oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Persons speaking on oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Is there anyone that is here tonight that would like to speak to our council for up to three minutes? We have two people. We have Suzanne and Olympia with their hands raised. So, Madam Clerk, could you bring in Suzanne? Suzanne, would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to talk to us for anything that's not on the agenda?
Thank you for the opportunity. This is Anna Altenboga, 66 Atlantic Street, out on the way to Wingo Sheik Beach. You all remember me as a part of the team that does boat design at Gloucester. We are now entering our 70th year as a member of the working waterfront. Well, it has been started in 1952. As he and I continued the work. And as part of that effort, we've been trying to aid our commercial fishing industry. We looked at a great deal of regulations kept this industry from entering the 21st century with a modern fleet. And it's not just a matter of how much resources out there, but how you can catch the fish that's actually there. When you talk to people at University of Massachusetts Esme at school down in New Bedford, they will assure you that haddock, pollock, redfish are dying from old age by now rather than being able to be taken effectively because the fleet has not been allowed to develop advanced catch technology and have not been allowed to build a fleet that would allow you to do that advanced catch technology. To that effect, I've sent you folks, a couple of weeks ago, 10 days ago, our interim report, which I hope you can see here, you should have it in your email inbox. It's quite a beast to plow through, but there's lots of pictures in there. And as you will see, broken down the language of the federal court that condemned our industry through now 28 years worth of physical stagnation. That's quite something. And it takes issue with people who failed the industry. No need to discuss this here. Now you can read it at your own leisure. And I would also emphasize that maybe you should take a look at project number three in that piece. I don't know whether you can see it, but it's our I-4C-2 vocational technical high school project we first raised December 15, 2010. That long ago, we had hoped that we would not see that fine marine industrial property we lie fellow for the next 10, 12, 11 years. But so far, we haven't taken advantage of this. Except if it were part of the Gloucester school system, we would be breeding a next generation of fishing folk, of industrial folks, of machinists, of all sorts of people that were necessary for the marine industrial economy, and talking to boatyards and machine shops around town and other folks related to the industry. We don't have enough young folks who find it very interesting because we have this atmosphere of decay, decay, decline, melancholy. And I think the city has a fine opportunity owning that one piece of property, the only big one that we have publicly control over, to actually consider this opportunity. This report that you have will go online, along with that will be going online, the original presentation on I-4C-2 vocational technical high school. And I think that particular project would be the only one such, not only in Massachusetts, but likely in all of New England. So America's oldest fishing port, doing a favor to the next multiple generation, might be an interesting move as we enter the 400th anniversary year. Thank you very much for your time, and I do thank you all those who have confirmed having received that report. Please do read it. You have not received it in your inbox, Mr. O'Neil?
I have not.
I will try to send it to you by email once again. Thank you for noting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Suzanne. Next person with their hand up. It looks like Louise Palazola.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and your name and address. That would be great. You have three minutes to speak to us.
Olympia Louise Palazola, 57 Weston Avenue, Gloucester, Mass. I'm calling regard to the ordinance that was put together, I think, in 2019. It's about the parking on the boulevard of the ton, the ton trucks, motor homes during events. And it's been in place for a while, and so far, we've lucked out. We've done really well. This hasn't, it hasn't happened. But I think there's a lot of new police officers now on the police force, and they probably don't even realize about the ordinance. Saturday, I'm trying to think, it was Saturday night of Fiesta. There was a big motor home on the boulevard, and during the races, they put out their awning onto the grass. They had their chairs all along the sidewalk, and then they put out tables onto the boulevard. And it was kind of, you know, you had to walk around them to get past the boulevard. You couldn't walk right there. In the meantime, they, when I got up the next morning, they were still there. So it wouldn't be a repeat of the night before. I did call the police and explain to him that there is an ordinance, and they were gone right after that. And last year, at 3rd of July, there was a big motor home up by where they play the music. So that ordinance is in effect, but like I said, the young police officers, I don't know if they realize there's no parking overnight. And that's really been enforced quite a bit every year. So just want to see if someone could mention that to the police department and let them know that they couldn't, they're not allowed to park here tonight overnight. Not tonight, but on the 2nd for the third parade and stuff. And like I said, it turned into a big party for them, and you know, that's fine, but there's other places that they can have their party and enjoy the Fiesta as well. So just letting you know that this has been in effect for a while and hope you enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Appreciate it. Next, we have Doug. Doug, would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to talk to our council. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Doug Shepherd. I live at 22R Flume Road. Can you hear that?
We can, loud and clear.
Okay. My issue is about the Magnolia Pier. I've been a resident for 60 years. I've been a, I have a boat down the pier for 26 years, coming off the pier, a little dinghy. And I was told I wasn't able to hook it up this year. And I really didn't understand why. I still don't, but, um... You know, I've never seen a problem down that pier. I've, a few years ago, before the, before the new pier, I helped, I volunteered to put crossbeams on the pier where they were missing or where they were in wrong spots. Me and, me and Council, Council Jamie O'Hara and Peter Lake did a whole summer and a half down there on volunteer time and didn't ask for a penny. We worked with Jim Carcat, who was the harbor master at the time, and we have a good relationship. This new harbor master seems to have it out for Magnolia as far as I'm concerned, as...
Doug, would you refrain from making any personal comments about any members?
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Continue.
It seems like the harbor master didn't follow protocol on a meeting that they had when they shut down the Magnolia Pier. None of the residents or any of us voters were able to have oral comment on it at all. And that was very hard for us. I'm a lobster man. I've been lobstering out of that pier for 26 years. I, uh... I have three children that enjoy going down there, and, um... The last three years, we haven't been able to. It's, uh, it's, you know, we raised a lot of money for that pier, as you guys know. Our community, Gloucester, Magnolia, raised close to $100,000, and I think we should get a say in this. I'm asking the council to either have them revote on this and let us have our say, or ask, I'm asking, we're pleading to the mayor to reverse what has been done because it's, uh, it's just not fair, you know? I don't know how we give a board the power to shut down something like a, 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 a working waterfront wharf because, uh... Because I don't know why, for no reason. So anyway, that's my gripe. I hope I can get some answers. And, you know, we're coming up on a 400-year anniversary of working waterfront, and it's kind of amazing that we're going to shut down a wharf. So, uh, anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug.
I don't see any other hands raised.
Neither do I.
Okay. So, next order of business, Madam Clerk. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Councilors, does anyone wish to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Council Worthley approved it and made the motion to approve. Council Memmar, second. Let's do a roll call vote. Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Let me check the list.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memmar.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
It wasn't in alphabetical order. It would be much easier for me to do, but, um, so the yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you for the teasing. Next order of business, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Record of June 23rd. Great. I'd like to turn control of the meeting over to Council Memmar, who chairs B and, B and F. So, thank you.
Thank you, and also thank you for acting as a substitute on Tony's behalf at our last meeting.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure.
So there are five items, I think, tonight for Budget and Finance before you. The first relates to the library construction project and our acceptance of Gloucester Lyceum and Sawyer Free Library's contribution of $150,000 to the city in our role as the fiduciary agent for the library for their retaining a construction manager at risk for the first phase of services. Although I had to make the motion, Budget and Finance recommends that the City Council accept under Mass General Law 4453A a cash contribution from the Board of Trustees of the Gloucester Lyceum and Sawyer Free Library in the amount of $150,000 for the purpose of funding the pre-construction design phase services of the renovation and expansion of the Sawyer Free Library at Two Dale Avenue, Gloucester, Mass, as specified in Article 2A of the Request for Qualifications, Number 22105, for construction management and risk services, and I so move. Second.
Motion made by Council Memmar, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, councilors?
I believe we're all familiar with this. Jenny spoke at length at the Budget and Finance Committee. But it's, it's the, it's an exciting first step in terms of the library's expansion plan. And again, the city acts as the fiduciary agent on behalf of the library board. So they're giving us this money so that we can extend it on their behalf.
Right, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, let's do a roll call vote. Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memmar.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Council Memmar.
The second item is also a exciting contribution to the city, and we move to recommend that the City Council accept cash donations under Mass General Law 4453A in support of the Class of 1988 Tennis Courts Project Team to replace the community tennis courts at Gloucester High School. This is a donation in the amount of $300,000 from the following members of our community. Lisa Nagallo and Doug Kerr, $250,000. Lindsay Coolidge, $50,000. For a total to be received of $300,000, and I so move. Second.
Motion made by Council Memmar, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, councilors? Council Nolan.
I'd like, uh, thank Lisa, Doug, and Lindsay. I will be adding to this list, but it will be for the class of 89. But thank you for all you've done.
Council Worthley.
I'd like to echo that. These are serious contributions, $250,000 for one family. And it's for a great cause. It's also named memory of a friend of mine, Stephen Ross, who was killed in 1993. And it's just nice that they continue to remember. So I'm going to support this happily, and I look forward to seeing the project. They did a fantastic presentation, Budget and Finance, last week.
Which is available in our meeting notes. It's a multi-page PowerPoint.
Anyone else?
This is unbelievable. I mean, yeah. Thank you. Words can't express the gratitude that I should, that I should have. Exactly.
So I'm, I'm an avid tennis player, so I'm particularly very excited for the public and, more importantly, Gloucester High School. I think that this is an unbelievably generous donation. Those courts, so much need to be replaced. I was, went to one of their matches about a month ago, and it was a great match. We won. It was right before we made it to the playoffs, and, um, and the team spirit was awesome. And the same group of young men on the boys' tennis team came, that I watched that day, came and helped with a cleanup at the O'Malley School in mid-May, which was phenomenal as well. So they're a spirited team. They're excited, and we've got a lot of excitement in the community to join the initial push of these two very generous donors to, to get the money that...
They are raising additional funding for lighting down the road. But if you could share with us, Val, their term for what happens when the ball hits a crack, of which there are many in the surface of the court?
I, don't they have to play it over?
It's a, it's a let.
It's a let, yeah. And there is like, there's dandelions growing. I mean, this is just, it's so needed. So, yeah, they explained that last week. So this is exciting. So I obviously will be supporting this. Any further discussions? Okay, roll call vote. Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Absolutely.
Council Majota.
Absolutely.
Council Memmar.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Absolutely.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil. Yes. Yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Council. Next order of business, Council Memmar.
We're receiving additional funds. The next one is number three from a memorandum from the Director of our Elder Services, Elise Nagre, requesting acceptance of fiscal year 2022 Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs Formula Grant in the amount of $88,848. And I'll read the motion. We would move to recommend that the City Council accept under Mass General Law 4453A a Massachusetts State Fiscal Year 2022 Council on Aging Formula Grant allocation from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs in the amount of $88,848. There is no local match requirement for the state grant, and the grant period is from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, and I so move. Second.
Motion made by Council Memmar, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, councilors?
This is a routine formula grant, Elise described to us in some detail, but it's part of their operating budget.
Thank you. So roll call vote, Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memmar.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Council Memmar.
The fourth item also is from Elise Nagre, a memorandum from the Director of Elder Services requesting acceptance of donations in the amount of $1,135. And Budget and Finance Committee would recommend that the City Council accept cash donations under Mass General Law 4453A to support the Council on Aging in the total amount of $1,135 from the following members within our community. Robert McCray, Cynthia Biorle, Louise Lucas, and Phyllis Reardon, for a total of $1,135, and I so move. Second.
So there's a motion made by Council Memmar, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion?
Good work by Elise and on behalf of the elder community.
Great, thank you. Roll call vote, Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memmar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
And Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
I think you're copying me from that last meeting.
Next order of business, Council Memmar.
Item number five on the Budget and Finance agenda is a memorandum from the Archives Committee, represented by Joanne Sinos, requesting acceptance of donations in the amount of $152. The committee recommended that the City Council accept cash donations under Mass General Law 4453A to support the Archives Committee in Donation Fund Number 3305 in the amount of $152 from the following members within our community. Nancy Reardon and John Ronan, for a total contribution of $152, and I so move. Second.
Motion made by Council Memmar, seconded by Council Worthley. Discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memmar.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil. Yes. Yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Council Memmar. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The ordinance and administration committee did not meet because of the holiday. Next is the planning and development standing committee report of June 22nd.
I'd like to say that we finished our meeting in five minutes. But the only thing we had on there that the council would be interested in was a road closure. Everything else is going to be continued, as will be discussed very shortly.
Thank you, Council. Next order of business, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, could you speak a little louder?
Is public hearing 2022-08, 2022-001 from Manglock, going on in section 5113, parentheses, 1, 5113, parentheses, 2, 5113, 5114, parentheses, 1, and 5114, parentheses, 2, regarding inclusionary housing requirements.
Um, I would like to open that, the public hearing, and continue it until August 9, 2022, the council meeting. Next order of business, Madam Clerk. It's the council vote, City Charter, Section 211B, Emergency Measure. City Council vote to adopt as an emergency measure the temporary extension of the June 30th payment deadline
for renewals only, commercial shellfish permits in accordance with Gloucester Code of Orders, Chapter 20, Shellfish, Sea Worms, and Eels, Article 2, Section 20-21D, in 2029.
Great, thank you. And we're happy that Peter Semenara is here, who is our shellfish warden. So Peter, would you like to kick this on?
Yeah, I would. Yeah, this was, it was brought to my attention that due to the, as I'm reading the motion, due to the sudden onset of red tide, and I don't know if everyone's aware that shellfish, commercial shellfish permits are only available for the month of June. And so I was asked if we could make an emergency measure because of the, you know, a week and a half ago, the emergency shutdown. It appeared, you know, in two days. Nobody had any warning. And some of the diggers were not financially capable of paying for the $400 fee. And, um... So all this does is it extends the period for the emergency order period of 61 days, the payment. They still have to get all their paperwork into the city clerk's office. This is a, it's a weird situation that the city clerk's office collects, collects the paperwork and, and the fee, and then the Peter Semenara, the shellfish constable, issues the permits. So they have to come in, they have to fill out all the proper paperwork, they have to have their identification, they have to prove they live in Gloucester, they have to, you know, there's a certain amount of steps they have to do, and that all has to happen before, by July 1 or by June 30. So that's, that's what this is, this is about. Pete's here for any questions that you guys might have, so, or I am. So in a way, that's, I think I pretty much signed up for what's required, is to do the red tide, you know, sudden appearance.
Great. So without, go ahead, Council Nolan.
Another little question, just a comment. Peter, thank you as always for being on top of things and working with Tony on this. Sometimes leaving a hand, you're running to cover next one, and I think this is a great deal for people.
Thank you, Council Nolan.
So without objection, should we just do the motions, and then if we need to ask Peter for questions, that would be great.
Now, emergency measures have two sections. There's a preamble, and then there's the, uh, the actual motion. So I'll make the first motion. Due to the sudden emergency red tide closure prohibiting the harvesting of clams on the Gloucester clam... um, emergency red tide closure prohibiting the harvesting of clams on the Gloucester clamback flats and the immediate resulting financial hardship placed on the local shellfish harvesters. It is proposed that the June thirtieth deadline for the payment of commercial shellfish harvesting permit renewals be extended by an emergency measure. The, the emergency measure does not include an extension for the proper filing of renewal applications with the city clerk. That deadline remains June thirtieth. And I so move. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Nolan. Um, is there a discussion? And if you have any questions for Peter, he's here on the, um, on the screen.
A quick question, uh, just on, on procedure, because we don't deal with emergency orders very often. The preamble establishes, the council recognizes that there is emergency, and then the second motion is the solution to set an emergency. Okay, very good. We need two-thirds on each?
Yes, and we need two-thirds vote on it.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Um, Counsel O'Neill?
Would this, this would pertain to all shellfish, including lobstemen?
No. This is, this is, yeah, um, lobsters aren't, they're
Okay, I'm glad I asked.
Yep, no, no, this is, they're, they can, um, their permits are through the state.
Okay.
They're not through the city.
Thank you.
This is sea worms and, and clams, correct?
I knew it was, I knew it was clams, but
And, and eels, what's it?
Yeah, shellfish, sea worms and eels, just any, um, anything defined as shellfish in the Mass General Law is managed by the municipality and not, um, not by the state. So we issue the permits through the city, and these are the only permits that will be affected.
Do you have a question for you? Do you, can you anticipate how long you think that the flats are going to be closed right now? Is there any way you can gauge how they might be getting better?
Um, the last counts that we received were going up, so we're looking at a minimum three weeks closure right now.
Wow, um, yeah, Counsel Grow.
Just, just out of curiosity, because we have you here, are we seeing greater regularity and, uh, longer periods of time of red tide? Is that in any way resulting from, from global warming, water temperature rise?
Most, most likely, uh, that has something to do with it. It's temperature dependent, so it's, it, it thrives within, excuse me, it thrives within a certain temperature range of the water. So we're about a week early this year that we ordinarily would see it, and the counts skyrocketed in muscles, um, over two days. So the reason, the weather we had this weekend, the warm temperatures, and then that heavy rain we had yesterday is probably going to prolong this. Um, and ultimately, in order to reopen it, they need three consecutive descending counts. So if to, if Tuesday's count was below the threshold, they would still need two more weeks of descending counts in order to reopen it. Um, it's difficult to really say with certainty whether it's, has something to do with rising Gloucester temperatures, but um, it's a, it's a regular occurrence here. The severity could depend on that, but the harmful algal bloom itself is, is, um, a yearly occurrence. It's just whether it makes it onto our, our shorelines. Um, the end of May, there was pretty serious long-term easterly winds, and that tends to blow it in. And then they'll start detecting it in Southern Maine and then throughout New Hampshire before we get it. So there's, there's a little bit of forewarning, but um, this one, at least in my experience, has been, uh, particularly rapid in increasing counts, so um, most likely warming water temperatures will cause more frequent, uh, harmful algal blooms.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other further questions on this, um, on this motion or discussion?
I, I just have a follow-up, Pete. Um, and then don't we want the temperature to rise higher, um, now to get rid of it?
Yeah, so ordinarily, it thrives within a certain temperature range, so, um, usually like a late July, early August heat wave will break a, a PSP event. Uh, so, yeah, we want the, we want the water temperature to rise above the upper threshold that the, uh, the algae is able to survive in.
Wow.
Yeah, interesting.
Any other further questions or discussion on this motion, uh, Counsel Worthley?
On the motion to declare an emergency, I'd give credit to Counsel Growth, I'm sorry, Gross for, you know, sort of using government to help people quickly and efficiently. Um, I think that sometimes we think we can't get a lot of things done, but this was quick acting, and I thank you, Pete, for bringing this forward. It's certainly an emergency, um, especially for the shellfish, um, members who are participating, so I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other further comments?
Is there a resulting impact on our area restaurants as a consequence of this, is there?
I guess I would ask that of Peter.
On the diners.
Peter, any, any consequences on our restaurants, or is it prices possibly?
So usually, usually they'll, clam deals will stockpile clam anticipating some sort of, uh, closure. Uh, but most likely, the, the consumer will face the higher cost of buying fried clams at a restaurant. Um, but that's a trickle, trickle-down, um, effect from the dealers are going to charge higher prices for what they have on hand. The wholesale is going to charge a higher price, the restaurant's going to buy it at a higher price, and they're going to sell it to you at a higher price. So there is ultimately a, a financial impact, and fried clams, as we know, is a popular summer, uh, summer food for, uh, tourists.
Peter, my husband and I both closely read the article that was in the Globe this weekend, which you were quoted in quite a large portion for some of the work that you're doing. And it's fascinating, um, about the screens that you're putting on to try to protect the, the clams from the green crabs. And I mean, it, it's just, it's amazing how the work that needs to be done, and those green crabs just are horrible. I
It is, it's an, it's an ongoing process, both, both trying to repopulate that particular area. And that'll take the burden of effort off of some other hotter-hit areas versus utilizing like effort control by eliminating permits, closing areas down, et cetera. We try to repopulate areas that were formerly abundant and now, for some reason or another, have declined in, in shell stock. So, um, it's an ongoing process right now. We are battling the green crabs constantly. Um, and if we don't, if we're not able to recruit clams in that area, it'll tell us that there's some other issue at, at play, such as, uh, ocean acidification can affect, um, soft shell clam growth, soft, soft shell clam seed settling in particular areas. So this is just a, a step in trying to determine why that particular area became less productive.
Fascinating. I'd love to see you put it on your Facebook page for, um, the shellfish group, if you're allowed to do that, so we can all share it. So it was
That page, that page unfortunately got hacked and we had to remove it.
Oh, well, I'll see what I can do with, um, making a copy of that and getting it around, because we're proud of all the good work that you're doing.
Yeah, it also, the article in the Globe, which is a great article, very interesting, also mentioned, uh, Rex Visnick.
Yes.
Pete's deputy.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, Rebecca, Rebecca basically spearheaded that effort. She did all the organizing, um, of the, of the commercial clams that assisted us and, um, was out there physically laying the nets with them. Uh, I have a bad back, and so she was out there in the field, and I, I, I was the supervisor.
I saw her, I saw her on, was it Friday?
Yeah.
Right in the building center buying scrub brushes to go down, because the algae grows on anything that it can, or weed, no, algae, uh, weed grows on anything it can in shallow water, standing there.
They have to be constantly, they do have to be constantly maintained.
Yeah.
So if any of you guys would like to help, we would, we would gladly welcome it.
You supply the boots?
Uh, maybe.
The kids are marvelous. Tony, what size?
Basically, four and a six-year-old, no, three and five.
The boots are just, I think they're, they're size.
Okay, so, um, we know what the motion is, we know who upset, uh, who made the second. We've done a very good discussion, so let's do a roll call vote. Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Michota?
Yes.
Memmar?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan? I'm in Counsel O'Neill, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, the yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Second part of the motion, Counsel Gross?
Okay. The City Council shall vote to, to adopt as an emergency measure the temporary extension of the June thirtieth payment deadline for renewals only. This emergency measure does not apply to the June thirtieth expiration date for current permits. All renewal applications must be properly completed and filed with the clerk's office by the June thirtieth deadline as per Gloucester Code and Ordinances, Chapter Twenty, Article Two, Section Twenty dash twenty-one D. No renewal shall be issued until the full payment of four hundred dollars has been collected as per Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twenty, Article Two, Section Twenty dash twenty-nine, nine. Emergency measures shall stand repealed on the sixty-first day following their adoption, unless extended by a vote of the City Council as per City Council Char, the City Charter, Article Two, Section Two dash eleven B, and I so move. Second.
Is there a discussion, counselors? Any narrative, Counsel Grow, Gross?
Very added.
Okay. Um, Counsel Worthley and then Counsel Nolan?
I just want to ask if there's some methodology that we can remind ourselves of the sixty days? And if we have an opportunity to extend this a second time, if that's necessary, so.
Give a shellfish council vote, tell us.
Okay.
Right?
Pete, that's on you. What was the question?
Do not use the calendar.
Can you just remind us when sixty days is up? We've got a lot of things on our agenda.
If it needs an extension.
I will.
We're allowed to do this twice, so I want to make sure that we're on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Nolan?
I'd like to make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion?
Was it an amendment you were making?
Oh, no. Um, Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Michota?
Yes.
Counsel Memmar?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Yes, it's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Counsel Nolan?
I'd like to make a motion for a vote to reconsider on the first motion.
Okay, we have a second. And, um, remember, counselors, that if you don't want to reconsider this, the vote is a no. Um, Counselor Worthley?
No.
Counsel Gilman?
No.
Counsel Gross?
No.
Counsel Grow?
No.
Counsel Michota?
No.
Counsel Memmar?
No.
Counsel Nolan?
No.
Counsel O'Hara?
No.
Counsel O'Neill?
No.
Um, the motion fails to reconsider. Zero in favor, nine opposed. Um, Counsel Nolan, second motion.
I would like to make a motion on the second motion for a vote to reconsider. Second.
The consideration made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Memmar, same thing. Uh, Counsel Worthley?
No.
Counsel Gilman?
No.
Counsel Gross?
No.
Counsel Grow?
No.
Counsel Michota?
No.
Counsel Memmar?
No.
Counsel Nolan?
No.
Counsel O'Hara?
No.
Counsel O'Neill?
No.
The motion fails to reconsider. Zero in favor, nine opposed. Um, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Pete.
Um, we really appreciate it very, very much.
One, one more thing, you're making sure that they're not confused. Nobody's confused that this extends their deadline on anything else, right?
Nope. I want to send out another text right now to let them know that paperwork must be in by Thursday at close of business and payment within sixty days of that.
Yeah.
Thank you, counselors.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I appreciate it. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk?
The next order of business is the decision to adopt special city council permit twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two, Main Street, number two two two, map thirteen lot seventeen, Gloucester zoning ordinance, section three point two point one eight, conversion to our new multi-family or apartment dwelling, seven or more, um, seven oh, I'm sorry. Seven or more dwelling units to convert from a three family to a seven family in the C V Central Bus, Business District.
Um, I moved to adopt.
Second.
Gilman has moved it, Counsel Worthley has seconded it. Is there a discussion, counselors, on this motion to adopt?
I wonder if it'd be helpful to the newer councils, and I wanted them to just explain what we're doing so that, um, it's clear.
I think we did this at an early meeting, but we can certainly do that again. Um, so we, we've already approved this, and now we have to adopt it, and that's the second part of it. Um, Madam Clerk, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure. So after the public hearing, when you approved to grant this, um, special city council permit, the legal department has ninety days to work, to write a decision. And once the decision is written and, and submitted to the council, the council has to adopt this decision. The vote has to be held for twenty-four hours, and then on Thursday, if nobody reconsiders, then I timestamp it, the decision, and the twenty-day appeal period starts. And after the twenty-day appeal period or within the twenty-day appeal period, somebody can appeal the decision. Or if there's no appeal, then after the applicant can come in and get a certificate of no appeal, file it with the registry, and it's on record.
And I would say that Suzanne Egan did a super job on the, um, the summary of what went on for our vote. It was a very, very detailed, it was lengthy, and it mirrored exactly what we voted at P and D and then for, um, the full committee, so, um, it's in, in members of the public, if you're interested in looking at that, it's in the packet for tonight, so we encourage you to look at it.
I think we want to add that how important it is for us to be on top of this as we are doing this tonight, the terms of appeals and all legalities that can happen after we take a vote, so I'm glad to see it on, in front of us like this.
Great, thank you. So I made the motion to adopt, there was a second, and, um, we are going to vote it. So Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Present.
Counsel Michota?
Yes.
I voted present.
Oh, okay. Counsel Memmar?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Um, eight in favor, one in present. Thank you. So we have a next order of business.
Um, no, are, are you going to?
We are, okay, yeah. So we, we have, uh, an additional, um, order of business, and, um, per our open meeting law, um, we can consider any matters that were not reasonably anticipated by the chair, um, and we can discuss it. So, uh, because after the forty-eight hour posting, um, late in the day yesterday, there was an, um, an order made for the emergency bag ban for a week. And, um, although this is not in the agenda, that's exactly one of those times where we have the flexibility as a council to put this on our meeting agenda. So I'd like to turn the meeting over to Counsel Grow, who has, similar to the shellfish matter, um, two motions to make that will support the mayor's request, so I'll take it away.
Very, very hastily built.
It's okay.
I want to thank, uh, City Clerk Julian Sanos for, for pointing out the necessity of this action by the council. Uh, the preamble, I'm going to read, is also a motion that again declares that such an emergency exists, and then we will go to a motion on how to remedy that. Uh, so the preamble that I have is due to the unforeseen destruction and the availability of pay-as-you-throw bags for trash disposal, the Berg administration has declared that residents will not need to use the PAYT, pay-as-you-throw bags, but instead will be able to use two regular trash bags for the regular pickup day, effective immediately until Monday, July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Because this is covered under city ordinances, the council is required to vote to declare an emergency according to Section Two Eleven B, Emergence Measures, in order to suspend the relevant ordinances, in this case, Section Nine dash two A, to allow for the suspension of fees during this period, and I so move. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Grow, seconded by Counsel Nolan. Is there a discussion, counselors? Underneath the emergency.
And the only thing I would say is that, again, thanks, thanks for, uh, John, for picking this up. I mean, this is, this is one of those weird little areas where we have a responsibility, and the administration has a responsibility, and, and our responsibility is to make sure that we uphold the, this, they're defined in these that are defined in the Code of Ordinances and, and the mayor i- in, in his effort to get a resolution to this, missed, missed a step where he has to talk to the council about it. And so we're, we're effectively giving a, a little, little bunt to the, to the mayor to get through the next week and a half, so.
Is it okay to ask a question now? I guess where if you have a normal household that has, that uses three purple bags, you know, per week or whatever, and it might trash bills up quickly, and you're limited to two large trash bags, where what would the person do if they know we throw three trash bags away?
I, I guess the answer to the question is it's not really up to us to figure that out, that's an administration discussion because our, our only role in this is to determine whether or not fees are being paid during the period.
Okay.
But I would say use less.
I would love to go with you less diapers.
I know you got three little kids, but yeah. Just throw in the marsh like I do.
Oh, okay.
Dig a hole. I'm kidding. For God's sake, don't anybody take that seriously.
Find a dumpster.
Council, do we need to amend your motion just to say you had a hard end at, on July fifth?
That's next.
Oh, that's next. Okay.
Council O'Hara has a stand-up.
So Council O'Hara?
I just want to confirm what Council Majota just mentioned. And this is a very serious issue. This isn't an issue that was, a- and I know I may be speaking out of place, but someplace this issue needs to be discussed. The people didn't bring this one and Council Majota i- is, is just one of many who, you know, out of life's necessity do generate trash beyond two bags. The taxpayer is ultimately paying for this. This is taxpayers' bunny. We can't burden them. We give them, the, the city can't burden the taxpayers, our customers, our constituents with additional pressures and particularly in the summer months, temperatures rise, trash obviously doesn't have a pleasant odor. I hope the administration can, can look at the reality and, and increase the bag number from two to a more generous number without putting additional stress and burdens and as was mentioned, to, to, to go out and look for a dumpster, whi- which I know was said tongue in cheek, but this is a serious issue. Rodents will, will infestate areas and, and we can't have that. So I hope the administration can relook at the two-bag order. Thank you.
Well, this, this is just from now until Tuesday, so of next week, so I'm not sure if we're going to be able to make that change in, in a week. And I also had I known that this was going to come up tonight, which we did not, I would have asked our C A O to be here tonight and she's not here. I told her that there was nothing big on tonight's agenda that I felt she needed to be here in attendance, so. But you know, I, I think, you know, I, I like the spirit of this emergency order right now because I think we needed to cover this. It's part of our job is making sure that we're enforcing the G C O and administration takes care of the enforcement, but we set the policy. So I'm glad that this came up and that we have this motion. So I will be, I think you made the motion.
I made this as the motion to establish emergency.
Right, so you made the motion.
Second.
Yes.
Second by Nolan.
Okay, thank you. All right. I appreciate it. Council Worthley, on the motion.
Thank you, on the motion. So this is new for us. We have a sort of hybrid administrative function and the council function colliding at the same time. Do we have the authority on this or the mayor's office has the authority? And so if we decide we wanted to go longer than July fifth, is that within our jurisdiction? If it's not, would it make sense to allow the administration to go beyond July fifth? This is going to be a meeting next week.
So, go ahead, Council Grow.
I'm going to deal with that somewhat in the next motion. I think the, the problem we have here is that the ma- the mayor made a, a, a decision to address an issue and somewhere along the lines, the process got missed. And so what we're doing is we're sort of backstopping the administration, giving them the cover to let the week go by and I, I put in language in here for an additional week if the administration needs it necessary. If they come up with purple bags next week and suddenly everything is done, then all good. But at least we have, if we, if we vote the next two things, if we vote this motion and the next motion, we'll have a two-week buffer that the administration can then determine whether or not they need to, to have that. And that's in light of the fact that we don't meet again until twelve.
And counselors, I'd, I'd like to comment too. This is as much my fault as the mayor's fault. Because this is, this was something that I should be very aware as well. That this was an ordinance, there was a temporary emergency order and, and it happened yesterday. So I was reminded of this right before the meeting. And so, you know, we set the, we set the emergency order via our policy and our Gloucester Code of Ordinances. And they were recommending this, so I, I don't want to be remiss by saying that part of this is the responsibility of the city council president, so.
Well, we're addressing that. If I could continue on my one thought. So Council Worthley raised a good point on the number and I don't know if we have any control over that. Last week, it was federal holiday, Juneteenth. I thought the trash was going to be delayed by a day, like there would be for every
Right.
national holiday, so I have last week's trash and this week's trash and I don't know if I can make it fit in two bags. I'm one person and I'm sure that there's a lot of people, we have that kind of jurisdiction to allow three.
Right now, I'm not comfortable with discussing this. We don't have a member of administration here to, to discuss it. It's not on the agenda. We are dealing with just this emergency issue right now, so I'm, I'm comfortable doing what we're doing right now. I'm not comfortable getting into a long conversation without having the opportunity to have a two-way dialogue.
I rarely do this, but I do want to apologize for being flip about that because it is a serious issue.
I'm offended, I guess.
No, no, I, I know, but there are people out there that might think that I'm not taking this seriously.
It's a great question.
And sometimes
If you need some extra purple bags, we always keep, you know, my wife gets an inventory ahead of time, so.
So, so basically what you're saying is everybody can go to your house and get a purple bag?
And I also, I also checked the website because I wasn't sure if it was a delivery last Monday and confirmed that there was, so. I was on top of it.
I know this is going to be impacted on a lot of people. Anyway, I do, I do agree this is going to be impactful on a lot of people and I, I do take it seriously, which is why I crafted such an eloquent preamble. Thank you.
Yes, I think we're ready to vote. Everyone's clear what we're voting on.
Yes.
Thank you. Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memmar?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Second part of
Second part of the motion would be, under the provisions of Section two point eleven B, the city council has declared an emergency measure in response to the supply chain issues that have affected availability of the pay-as-you-throw purple bags in concert with the mayor's order to suspend the requirement to use the pay-as-you-throw bags under Section nine dash two A from today until July fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Because the council does not meet again until July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, the council will include an allowance of an extension of this order until July tenth, two thousand twenty-two. If in view of the administration, if in the view of the administration, such an extent, such an, I'm sorry.
Say it again.
I'm going to. The council will include an allowance of an extension of this order until July tenth, two thousand twenty-two, Sunday. If in the view of the administration, if i- in the view of the administration, such an extension is necessary. So much for my eloquence. And I so move.
Second.
Council Grow made the motion and Council Worthley made the second. Is there a discussion counselors?
Well, if I could, the word salad in this that I, I couldn't get through is that we're agreeing to the mayor's extension in July, till July fifth. Then we have an extra week we don't meet. That gives them until Sunday, the tenth, to settle the problem. If, if they don't, we meet on the twelfth.
So shouldn't we extend it to the twelfth? I, I don't believe
Five and seven.
I don't think so, only because that that puts a funny weird thing on the week. They don't declare a, a new emergency on the tenth. Some people may want to put out bags on the tenth, on the eleventh, which is Monday. Some, you know, it's going to create confusion, so I figure I, I chose the tenth as a day because that is the end of the work week, begins the next week is new pickup week. It's a fair
But if you put your trash out on Monday, right?
Yes.
How are you going to know if the city, if the administration or the city council or, we don't have purple bags? How, how do we know that?
So I, I think
Sunday because there's no a lot of people don't
We're giving them all of next week to get this sorted out.
My, my understanding is that the bags are coming. In fact, I think they were supposed to arrive yesterday at two o'clock, a huge stop. So I'm, I'm confident that we have an extra week if it's needed.
Okay.
And, and that will be at the discretion of the mayor's office, so I'm comfortable with that. And I do have twelve purple bags, so if you really need a purple bag, I will, I will personally deliver it and, and I'm not stocking them. I'm not stocking, I'm not stocking them, but I regret donating a purple bag if someone really needs it. So go ahead, I'm a hoarder now, right? Okay. You don't have puddles like us. Okay, so we have a motion, we have seconded it and Counselor Worthley?
Yes. So first, thank you Council Grow for putting this together and Chair for organizing this and also the Berg administration. This obviously was a surprise to them too. And to move swiftly, anything in government doesn't move fast, but they'll move swiftly and realize is it burning and take action. I'm going to give credit for that. Later in the meeting during council's request, I'm going to ask if we can do some sort of overview of the pay-as-you-throw program at some point in the near future so we can understand it and maybe look at alternatives if, if there are any. But we're kind of happy to support this and commend the mayor and Council Grow and yourself for putting this together. Thank you.
If I could.
Council Grow?
Only because we, we discussed clam so long, I feel like we discussed this as well. And I sent an email to Kenny Costa today on this very issue. A lot of people are very excited about the fact that, you know, they have to pay for the pay-as-you-throw bags and why don't we just put this on property taxes? Why don't we do stickers and all that? Unless I'm wrong, and Kenny can correct me here, the pay-as-you-throw bags pays for less than half the cost of solid waste disposal. So this is already being partially paid for through property taxes and regular right, yeah, the, yeah, exactly.
I don't want to preempt that conversation. I was saying, get rid of I just want to make sure we understand
I'm putting that out there because there's been a lot of discussion on various message boards, whatnot about, you know, what this means and why are we doing this? And the fact is that pay-as-you-throw bags only covers X amount of
And that's on the front of it, the pay as you go, that doesn't account for also the cost of the bags, which is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Two hundred and twenty thousand, yeah.
So it's, it, it's more than, it's probably sixty percent is on the tax.
Yeah.
But it, it is of course also an inducement to encourage people to recycle to the extent that they possibly can and if appropriate, to also compost and reduce the waste stream that has to be paid for.
And we teach this in our schools, that we have a tremendously awesome program where our kids in our elementary schools go through all these stages of learning about waste and garbage and recycling and the program is awesome. I've attended some of them it's second to none. Our kids know more than we do about recycling. Thank you Gloucester Public Schools.
I mean, last thing is I noticed that Lisa, L J is on call. I don't know if we can suspend our rules and allow for public comment or not, but I just want to draw your attention to that in case you
I, I think that we need to keep moving because this, this matter is an emergency matter.
I just want to make sure you
So, Council, can you vote? Thank you. Council, so we're ready to vote. Okay. Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memmar?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara? Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
This means as of today, your trash stays tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay. And is there a motion to reconsider?
Do we need one? Motion reconsider?
Sure, certainly did.
I'll make a motion reconsider, sure.
Okay, Council Grow, is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Council Memmar. So you know what the vote is, right? Okay. So Council Worthley?
No.
Council Gilman, no. Council Gross?
No.
Council Grow?
No.
Council Majota?
No.
Council Memmar?
Nope.
Council Nolan's absent. Council O'Hara?
No.
Council O'Neil?
No.
The reconsideration fails and eight, eight opposed, one, one absent. And we need to do, we need to do the second reconsideration.
I move to reconsider the city council vote on the motion to suspend Section nine point two, or nine dash two. Second.
Seconded by Council Memmar. Is we don't need a discussion. Grow call vote, Council Worthley?
No.
Council Gilman, no. Council Gross?
No.
Council Grow?
No.
Council Majota?
No.
Council Memmar?
No.
Council Nolan, absent. Council O'Hara?
No.
Council O'Neil?
No.
Motion fails. Eight opposed.
It's your day.
Yeah. In one present or one absent. Thank you. So next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the update on the Waterways Board and Harbor Plan Committee by City Council Representative
Now, last week I said I was going to do ARCA, but I mean, I can do either or. It's up to the board, up to the council.
Which in your opinion is more important?
I have more to report. I'm probably on ARCA, I mean, you know. But I can, you know
Not on the agenda.
If you want to hear.
Perhaps we should hold on that because it's not on the agenda?
Sure.
Joey, what do you think?
Yeah, because I think
That's fine. I mean, I can
Last time, this was on the agenda, but then you started discussing ARCA.
I said let's change it and it didn't get changed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had, I had asked it to be changed to ARCA.
Okay, I apologize for that.
But, yeah, I mean, you know, we heard about the pier. I, unfortunately, the whole construction of the pier, all that was on, the Waterways Board was left out. I was not invited to a single meeting of any of that. I was early on when they were raising money with John. I didn't need to meetings at the library and stuff, but after that I was, I was out of the loop, so I don't have a whole lot. We got a report today from the mayor of the timeline of what went on and how that happened when I was Chair of the Waterways Board. We did put a moratorium on any more of the dinghy. But that was just a moratorium. It was not and then you saw the timeline put, put out by the mayor today. So that's what I said last year, the float got destroyed on September twenty-third. And actually because where it is over there, we had put in normally on all the other dinghy docks, everybody has until like November fifteenth, I think, to get the dings out of there. There was September fifteenth. So it was not much passed. And then, you know, you have to give a little grace period afterwards, but it was and we, we've had a lot of, you know, a lot of tropical storms happen in the summer that was a lot of different circumstances that, that led to the demise of that float. But they, Steve, I do have a call and Steve will blank to discuss that. Anything about that with him with this is now another. Let's throw it to the forefront again to see if we were planning any additional action. Haven't heard back. You know, they took the action in May to eliminate those, those dinghy docks which they had sent out according to the timeline notices last fall, but that was actually the action that would be done. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Council?
It's a, a awful lot of new members on the board.
So just a question. It's nice to get the timeline. It was helpful information, if I may.
Sure.
So when the pier was rebuilt, it was rebuilt without needing to get additional permitting because it was built exactly
Oh, it got all kinds. It said all the permits.
I thought it didn't need as much scrutiny because it was rebuilt the same way as it was before and
Well, it's still higher. You, you had to go get your, you know, no, it had to get its chapter ninety-one and I think the city put in a million dollars into that pier. So the city had, has a million dollars. There's also a considerable liability issue too that goes with outfall, hulls. I don't know if you're as familiar with what they're talking about with outfalls. It's a, it's. Here's. Here's the pier. Oh, that's my game. Here's the pier. Here's the pier. Here's an anchor. You have rope on the pier and a pulley. You have a rope and a pier on the anchor. And when you climb up the um, you know, when you have, you pull on the pulley, it's like a clothesline. It pulls the boat in. Then you have to get off a ladder into a little boat. And um, and then you uh, you unclip it and you go on your way. When you come back in, you get off on the ladder, you clip it. You get off on the ladder and you pull it back out. Um, so that's, that's how outfalls are. And then they're at, you know, high tide is, you know, up here or low tide, it's not, you know. But it always has to be above high tide, so it's always gonna be up here, which is another challenge. So they're not. But that's, that's what they are. Um, whether they're not gonna editorialize on, but they do, they do pose, there is a certain amount of liability that goes with it. That we need to be, that everyone needs to be taken into consideration. But they've been there. Outfalls have been used, um, you know, universally around, but.
I've heard from so many people who are very disappointed, obviously.
There's eight of them, eight people.
Oh, there's nine, but okay.
Nine, nine people.
But it's considerable. This is.
And we don't have any other moorings over there at all services. Manchester moorings.
I think there's an offer on the table for us to.
It was not a very good offer.
Receive the funds from the moorings.
It was not a very good offer. It was a while ago and it was not very good.
Uh, councillor Nolan, what councillor?
Yeah, Sean may, Sean may have a lot more on that than I do.
I, I, I actually have a, a lot to offer. Most of the people in Magnolia know what's going on. I think that in all fairness, for where the situation is in the polarizing moments and possibly some threats. That we need to take due diligence to make sure the administration works in the proper channels to work in Magnolia Pier and figure things out with engineering. Without a logic discussion, there's a lot of things that are in play, things that the mayor is working on with the Magnolia Pier, the flow of the ramp, um, the overhaul situation. Can come down to three or four different conclusions on engineering, how the question was asked, what was going on, what was gonna happen. All of which the mayor has asked for the answers, um, other than it tied to a railing or a uh ladder. So there is some different things that are working on, but I would say that it is something that is being worked on very close and warm-hearted from the administration and from the waterways board and from the Magnolia Pier advisory committee. So it, it's, it's a tough discussion. Um, I think that there's a lot of answers that are coming up. And instead of asking a lot of questions that we don't really have the answers for, to be out waiting for some stuff. I think it's best to know for the public that the administration is working on this daily and trying to find the most peaceful and prosperous and best way for the city to move forward. So without answers, I really don't wanna go any further because we are actively looking. The waterways board made a decision. They are the issuing authority on that. Things may change, but we'll find out what happens. But the mayor asked about the money for the start of the initial engineer plan and improvements to the pier. So uh, I guess it's all I can actually say without making something up.
Right. I mean, I mean, one of the improvements, so you can probably, we can talk about one of the improvements would be is that the ramp that was made. Um, like I said, I wasn't in on any of the discussions. The ramp that was made was extremely heavy. And no, none of the hopeful um, mooring haulers and things could lift it. Required substantial barge and crane to actually lift it. And when you get a rolling sea in there, which is quite often, um, like all summer long. In the south, you know, when you feel this afternoon sea breeze, Magnolia Pier, it's getting nice roll. It uh, it weren't, and, and the float was inappropriate also that was there. So it, it was a mixture of things. And that's what's really been, is they're, they're working on a, a system to be able to raise the ramp in place, um, which is, which would be a huge advantage over there. So there is, there is some real good stuff that's being thought about. And then the other, the other issue is, you know, they, they need to work on it. The administration is aware of it. So.
Thank you.
It's been brought to the forefront.
Great. Talk about the harbor plan.
Harbor plan um, is uh, coming to a conclusion. I was a little surprised because I thought there was more information that we, we would be getting. As far as the.
This is your wit? How many harbor plans doing?
Well, it's, it's all, I think it's my set, but.
We get it. And Rex.
Yeah, um, but it uh, it, I don't know if we're gonna get a defend, any definitive answer about our fishing fleet's needs for the harbor. That's uh, one of the things that I would hope we really get out of it, but we're, we're not done yet. So they've come up a little, you know, a lot of good information, but a lot of stuff that we already. So we'll, we'll see. There, there's gonna be another public session. August. Oh, there we go. So no, I don't have the date down, but they were planning on another um, another uh, public meeting in July, public input meeting, not public meeting, but a public uh, input meeting. In July, but they, we decided to have that as a regular harbor planning committee meeting. And so we moved it to a different date. To be determined, I think.
Can you say that again? You're gonna have a public input meeting?
Yeah, in July, but it, but it was decided that we actually needed to use that. We needed to have another planning committee meeting, harbor plan committee meeting.
Okay.
And then have the public input meeting after that because they're gonna be presenting a lot of stuff. And we felt there was too much stuff in the air yet to uh.
Okay, so the harbor play committee meeting is in July?
Yes.
Not August, right?
Um, well, there is one in July, but. Um, I don't know if we've.
That's okay, I just wanna.
Harbor plant, July eighth is the harbor plant committee.
Alright, thank you.
No, I'm in December, so. It'll be in August.
Okay.
Keep us posted. Thank you.
Yep, I will. Well, well, um, still is a lot of talk. A lot, there was a lot of discussion and I foresee too, without a lot of conclusions. Because it's a very distant um. Site.
Still conclusions yet, still?
After, after a dozen years.
Idea development.
I think, I think we, we know what the conclusion is. It's, time has told us, but that's, you know. Seems that those facts will be faced or another story. So.
Alright, thank you. Councillor, appreciate it.
On the property at uh, one twenty-two Commercial Street?
Twelve.
One twelve, thank you. One twelve Commercial Street was also discussed, but it's uh, good. Um, it was discussed that there's all, there's some um, topographical uh, issues, like holes and things that need to be probably smoothed out. Um, is that?
Some, some gravel and concrete.
Yeah.
And some surge erosion behind the granite seawall.
Yes.
So the city used that site as a staging area for the construction of the, of sewer infrastructure for Commercial Street. So they stored heavy equipment on that site, but the perimeter, the perimeter is partly eroded recently.
Oh, recent, oh, for the sewer down there, recent, yeah, right, right. I was thinking more, yeah, right. So yeah, so it, it should be, and you, as you well have, have been saying for a long time. It should be put to some form of public service. And there was talk of trap storage. There was talk of, you know, different things, but at least make it available. Then take the chain, you know, the fence down, make it safe. Make it safe and take the fence down.
That's probably the end piece.
Yes. We took it for back taxes.
Marine industrial, what? Is it marine industrial?
It's, it's marine industrial. It's outside of the DPA.
Outside of the DPA. Yeah, thank you.
It's a hard spot to tie boats up.
Yeah.
Benny Kukru managed it.
Dude, that's the size of, when you pulled up to Sunny's, the size of the walls.
I feel like I'm sitting in my living room. Come on, let's go. Okay. Thank you, councillor. Appreciate it. Um, next order of business, madam clerk.
Councillor's request to the mayor.
So we're gonna do this by roll call. We'll start with councillor Worthley.
So following up on the pay as you throw, I'd like to request we do a presentation, explain the entire program to the council. I'd like to, I don't know if that would happen, but I'd like to request. I'd like to request an accounting, a unitated accounting of the beach revenue, since we have a brand new program of the reservations. Let's see how this, it's working well, I think, in terms of traffic. Like I said, it's working in terms of the budget compared to three years. Um, I think the Fiesta was a big success this year. And I'd like to just publicly acknowledge the work that Fiesta has done and um, you know, I think the community really came together and I know the administration played a big role in behind the scenes, DPW, police, fire, those sorts of things. And kind of fire department for their work as speaking marine. And as you said earlier, police and fire, fresh responders for the event at the quarry. That's it for me today.
Okay, thank you. Um, councillor Gross.
Yeah, nothing.
Councillor Grow.
Uh, yeah, I've already submitted one uh, request regarding the um, parking kiosks. I would also request that, they're not already in process, that the signs um, indicating the contamination of the creek, it could ever beach either be more prolific or bigger in their presence so that um, they're easily seen by parents both um, coming across the bridge and also from the parking lot. I spoke to a number of parents who came in from the parking lot and did not see any signs indicated that there was a problem with the creek. And I think that we need to be a little better about letting people know uh, whether or not that's a safe place for their kids to be paddling around.
I would, I would like to make two adjustments to that too, because um, I know that they were looking to enlarge one, to make it very visible, visible. Um, but the sign doesn't specify the creek. It says no swimming.
That's true.
And that's, that needs to be corrected because when we're advertising that Harbor Beach is the best in the country. For, for people to arrive there and see a sign that says that there's no swimming because of high bacteria with a date of June, whatever. Um, it just doesn't, it's just not the right thing. So I think we have to put creek. And I also have mentioned to the mayor's office that I don't think that we should have um, our assistant board of health director. Um, her name on the um, the posters. I, I think typically we have phone numbers and that's the right way to advertise um, members of public to call, to have a person's phone. So I've made those two suggestions and I would like to make those again.
And I've already had my term, but if I could add, shouldn't we consider having the signs in more than one language? Considering the people who come to beach don't all speak English.
Um, probably not a bad idea. We can, we did that.
Yeah, this is gonna be an ongoing problem. And then we need a solution that fills with an ongoing variety of people who tend to be sentimental.
So we should just make that request. So thank you.
Are we doing any more testing and getting results?
I, I can address that in my comments.
Okay, great. Thank you, councillor. Um, so councillor Grow, you're all set. Thank you. Councillor Majota.
Uh, just a few requests. Um, you know, no parkings and particular areas. And also, I did get a call um, a few days ago about the Boulevard parking lot area as well as large trucks parking there. Um, so I just wanted to get more information on that. I'll be talking to the administration and see whether or not they can park it there. Just to piggyback on councillor Worthley, thank you for the Fiesta Committee and the Police Department DPW for the great work for a, seems like a flawless five-day festival. I feel like everyone had a great time. It's good to see everyone. And um, it's been great talking to everyone in person.
Last time.
For a while here, but yes, other than that, uh, yes, I think we're on. Put the show us back on, I'm excited.
Thank you, councillor. Um, next is councillor Memmar.
Yeah, I have three items and they're really not necessarily requests to the mayor so much as just share, sharing Ward one affairs with the rest of the council too. Uh, and the, the first related to the creek, uh, Rachel from the Board of Health reached out to me this afternoon. They don't have any new specific data to share. The rain event that we had yesterday was about a half an inch of rain. They are waiting for a two-plus inch rain event to give them the information they're looking for in terms of uh, the sewer testing behind Hart Street. So that wasn't enough as yet, but uh, I'll be working with her uh, and Max to plan a, a public meeting that will be probably broadcast in, by, by a Zoom from the conference room at the Tato Office Building. But there is no other new news. I didn't get into the signage thing with her, but that's a challenge. That's obviously a concern. Uh, while at the beach, I'd like to remind all of us that the piping plovers are thriving. They, we have two active families. The volunteers are uh, being very, very loyal and nurturing them along with the parents. There have been some challenges because complaints with the uh, people on Nautilus Road about the football team doing their practicing at that end of the beach. So they shifted their practices further out the beach that they do in the early morning and go to Harbor Beach. And put them into direct conflict with the area that the uh, the birds are nesting and the babies are there. And again, an accidental death of, of a chick would be considered a taking, T-A-K-I-N-G, by the state and the federal government and there'd be potentially serious financial consequences to the community. So uh, Kim Smith and her people have worked closely with the administration and with the athletic department of the high school, and they've resolved that. Uh, and they, and they used it also as an educational opportunity. Um, and the third thing, I just wanted to update you all. Um, I'm working on several betterment paving projects. All ten uh, the butters on Haskell Court have signed on and they're in the, in the, in the lineup now. Uh, we're working on Beach Road and Brightside Avenue. And it's, it's challenging to get people to sign on, on the betterment paving. It's, it's not as simple as we all would wish. There's a lot of discussion, a lot of uh, historical anecdotes and looking back rather than looking forward. One outcome is that um, a number of the residents on both Beach and Brightside have asked and are pursuing a short-term private solution while also pursuing a longer-term betterment petition solution. Uh, and they're, they're raising, uh, one of the local contractors has gotten outside quotes from a, with the one, from a paving contractor. And they're raising six thousand dollars to pave the potholes on Brighton Beach side, and we're almost there. So we're just trying to keep that balanced. The concern is that you pay for those potholes privately. You're really disincentivizing the longer-term investment in the betterment paving, which will end up being a cost of seven or eight thousand dollars per a butter. And there are about eighty-five or ninety of butters on those two roads.
Thank you, councillor.
Yep.
Hopeful to get that update. Um, councillor Nolan.
Uh, just a couple of things, not really a request from the mayor. One, I'd just like to ask the people of Magnolia to, to understand what's going on with the Magnolia Pier. We're working on it diligently. There's a lot of, a lot of hard work in this for years now. So please be patient. I understand needs for your outfalls. Uh, but we do have to go through a process and make things work. Uh, my second thing would be uh, that we're gonna have a Horables Parade again. We're looking for dough, people to walk out and do donations to collect them. We're looking uh, for people to work. We're looking for people to walk out and do donations, to collect them, we're looking for people that work as Horables, for floats, for whatever can happen, provided the weather is cool enough, I'll be out myself doing collections. And if I am doing collections, if I see you and I know you, I'm going to make you put something in that bucket. Other than that, have a great night. Yeah, yes, yes, BMO too, or whatever it is, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Hara, do you have anything to, any requests to the mayor, anything, any comments?
I just want to mention on Counselor Nolan pertaining to the pier is Doug Shadford in Oral Communications mentioned that I, I was one of the peers of the old pier. Counsel Nolan, in fact, supplied a lot of hardware tools during the repair work over the numerous years. In the day, there was twice that on the out halls. These people in Magnolia and Gloucester. That pier is therapeutic to many people. This, this problem's not going away, these people aren't going away, as, as you've heard, you've seen administration to address this issue. This is a serious issue. The consequences of trying to access their boats off the beach. Counselor Gross and I had a spirited conversation this morning.
Yesterday.
This, this is, is a very serious issue. I also want to, as mimic on Counsel Worthing pertaining to the Fire Department, Police Department, First Responders. Not only with the, the sad passing of the young man in the pit. The Beacon Marina in Ward Two, Story Road, Western Ave. But I've asked the administration possibly if they would consider after-action review of, of all four events, they were major events. And our Fire Department, Police Department should be commended for their services. But looking at them to see where, where they shined and possibly where they could improve. Also want to ask the administration if they could create a hydrant inspection. As I understand, there was a hydrant issue at Beacon Marina and hydrants minutes count, seconds count, minutes kill. Not having a working hydrant is, is, is a terrible thing. These hydrants protect our, our assets throughout the city, our taxpayers' properties. And all these hydrants should be tested annually, if not inspected twice a year or I, I don't know what is reasonable, but they all need to be functional. So I asked the administration if they can, can implement a, a inspection program, a testing program on the hydrants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Neill.
No, I'm all set.
So I, I'm the last person, I have a couple of things. First of all, I want Counselors to know that Greg Catimatory will be at our next meeting and he'll be presenting the open space plan to us. And I also have requested that Sal DiStefano comes to one of our upcoming meetings. I talked to the C O and the mayor about that today. We'd like to learn a little bit more about what's happening with the local rapid recovery program as well as other issues that the city is working on. And I think it's, it's timely right now because we might have questions and, and and so I'll look forward to that. So those will be posted on the agenda for members of the public to, to see so they can zoom in. And, and so that was important.
Love your presentation at the beginning of our meeting.
It would be, yes.
If we have questions, should we script them in writing in advance?
It's always a nice way to, to do it so that the presenter can prepare. So that would be great, great, great suggestion. And then I have just a couple of upcoming legally noticed public hearings on July 12th. Six o'clock, a public hearing on Special Counsel Firm at 2022, oh, oh, four, Condon Road, number 24, map 197, mark 13, GZO, section 2.3.5. Section one, Junkyard and G I District. Posted in the Gloucester Daily Times on June 24th. Twenty-two and 7122, we have not yet heard that P and D, but the public hearing is set for that date right now. And also we have for August 9th, 6:00 PM, public hearing on RZ 2022, oh, oh, one, then GZO, section 113, 1, 1, 1, etc. Inclusionary housing requirements that has been advertised in the Daily Times on June 1st, 2022, and again on June 6th. And it's been continued from June 14th, 2022, so I wanted to mention that. And then the other thing I wanted to remind Counselors about is we are in the public, we are going back to all Zoom right now. And that will be at our next meeting in July. And the meetings are going to be at six. For those of the public, it's, nothing's going to change. And, and I've asked that every quarter, we put this matter back on the agenda because I want to keep the conversation live about what we should be doing in terms of where we want to be having our meetings, how we can afford it. With the goal of, in my opinion, to do both hybrid meetings, where we're both allowing the public to join us at meetings and also to be able to have the opportunity to dial in and do hybrid.
Has there been any update on that from the state or from the governor's office?
Last I heard a couple of days ago is that it was still being discussed at the House. The, the Senate had, had voted it, but they're in the reconciliation process. And Senator Tar over the weekend didn't have any more updates on that. So that's, and we know that it expires on July 15th. But the Senate did approve it up to the end of the year in 2023. But Senator Tar has been very clear with me is that, you know, that's like the worst case, if we get another round of COVID, they want to have that in place. So, you know, the spirit of this is, might be different than just adhering to Zoom meetings all the time. And, and that's what he wants us to be aware of. So that's it, oh, I do have one request to the mayor, I'd like to request through the mayor that she asks DPW, she, he, sorry, that we, I was thinking of Jill, but.
You could say mayor.
That's mine, that's mine, thank you for catching me on that, Counselor. So I'd like to request to the mayor, so I'm safe, that we'd like, we, we need to stop, we need to stop paint and a line on the corner of Leonard Street and Bridgewater. And too many cars are just sliding through that intersection and it's becoming a safety issue, so. So what is the road to the right that it intersects, that little tiny road that's a hundred yards? Because it's left when you turn onto Bridgewater. I'll, I'll correct it tomorrow when, I, I understand, it's just a little tiny road, it's, yeah.
I don't want to be a broken record about this, but I keep wanting to remind people that the pandemic is not over. That our numbers are still high, that there are variants that are coming out now that are transmitting outside as opposed to indoors. So while I know we are all eager to see each other's lovely visages in person, we certainly, I think we're certainly a ways away from having the public involved in, in public meetings in, in person. Because we're, we're still not over that hump, we, we keep wanting to be, but we're not. And until we are, or at least until we're in a position to really feel confident that we are on that toe, I think we should be continuing to be vigilant about our behaviors.
Thank you, appreciate that. And the last thing I wanted to say is I just, we all signed a card to thank the Board of the Sawyer Free Library as well as Jenny Benedict, who is the Director of the Library, for their gracious use of this beautiful space that we've been able to have our meetings at. And they've really made us feel very welcome here and I think it's been a really nice venue for us to be at, Counselors. And on behalf of the City Council, to the, to the Board, and Jenny Benedict, thank you so much for allowing us to share this really nice space. So that's it. Anyone that would like to make, make a motion to adjourn? Okay, let's do a roll call, I'm not going to do this, I'm just going to go around the room, forget about it being out of medical order. Counsel Memar?
Yes.
Counsel Worthing?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Condoles?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes?
Oh, yes.
Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Mijota?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion. Oh, oh, and, oh my gosh, Jamie, how could I forget you? Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, good night, everybody, thank you, Joanne, thank you, Kenny, for staying on to the end.